All right.
Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. I'm John Dewanzik, and this is the regular meeting of the Avon Lake Board of Municipal Utilities. With me tonight on the board are, to my right, Mr. Ricky and Mrs. Schnabel, and on my left, Mr. Rush and Mr. Mondello. To my right here immediately is Chief of Utilities Executive, Rob Monroe, and at the table is Chief of Utility Operations, Greg Urinech. Mr. Urinech will be acting as the Recording Secretary and the Monitor of the livestream, which is available on Facebook and YouTube. And if you are in the Internet audience, you can participate in the meeting by, excuse me, by commenting online. And when we get to the point of public speakers, your comments will be aired. As far as public speakers, if there are any, they'll have three minutes each, once in the beginning and once at the end of the meeting. We expect, excuse me, a pretty short meeting in the open session, but we do have an executive session planned later. Also, in the audience tonight, we have just entered the room, Yaseem, former State Senator, Mr. Armbruster, and we have, from the McMahon DeGulis Law Firm, we have Lou McMahon, Karen Perkins, and Megan Godiger, okay? And also in the room for our protections, Officer Ryber from the Avon Lake Police Department. And he's not here at the moment, but who has, excuse me, entered is Gene Toy from Lorco, which is a sewer customer. Someone else is entering now. Attorney Anthony Coin from outside counsel. We would say the late Anthony Coin, but that's entirely true. Tonight's meeting, as I said, will be livestreamed with the whole board here. It takes a minimum of three affirmative votes to pass any motions. And is that it, Mr. Rush?
I believe so.
Did I get it? Okay. So it's been a long hiatus. We're just back from our summer recess, and I want to make sure I covered everything thoroughly. So having been through the call to order, let's move on to general matters, which include the approval of minutes from the June first, sorry, July first, two thousand twenty-five meeting. Are there any corrections, editorial remarks, or other statements to be made about those minutes? Hearing none, they are approved as submitted. The next item is public speakers. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board at this time? Mr. Urinech, is there anyone online with remarks?
No comments this time, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll move on from that. Next item is correspondence, and that's Mr. Monroe. What do you have?
I do not have any correspondence to pass along this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. The next item in your golden rod sheet for the board is the approval of expenditures. That's a pretty long one, and therefore higher values than normal, but from August, I'm sorry, June twenty-seventh to August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Would someone on the board like to make a motion? Mr. Ricky?
I move to accept the expense report dated June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five through August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Ricky. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Schnabel, discussion. Mrs. Schnabel? The only question I have while you guys are thinking, if you have any questions. A lot of overtime here, Mr. Monroe. How do you account for that?
Yeah, the, you know, this is for, over the course of three pay periods during this timeframe. I do know at least one ETL break that would have been during this time period. And, you know, we've discussed prior, we are reimbursed on ETL work by our consortium members, but that comes back into our fund as miscellaneous revenue and doesn't get reappropriated back into the budget line item. So while we do recoup those costs, it still takes a hit in our line item budget.
Temporarily.
Yes.
And before the end of the year, that'll be balanced?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Ricky, you had your finger up.
Yeah, just part-time employees. Are we hiring high school kids this year?
We are not. No, we have not hired summer help.
I didn't think we did.
Since pandemic. That would be associated to our intern.
Intern shows us.
Miss Davison.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else with comments on the expenditures? Well, let's close discussion and take the vote. All in favor of the motion as made, say aye. Aye, the motion is approved, so go ahead. The next item is Mr. Urinech, and that is step increases. Mr. Urinech?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These were step increases that took place during the summer recess, so we want to present them as an information item to the board. Ms. Tisa Lutz, it was her one-year anniversary as part of the collective bargaining agreement. That is a automatic step increase, so effective July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five, she moved to, from step two to step three at the rate of twenty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents per hour. And Tyler McCrevey received a promotion from laborer to line maintenance technician, step one, also effective July twenty-second, and that is at the rate of twenty-six dollars and forty-two cents per hour.
Okay, how long has Mr. McCrevey been with us?
I think it's less than a year.
Yeah, I don't recognize.
Yes, he is a newer employee.
Unusual spelling, too, but there's ten ways to spell McGreavy. Okay, thank you, Mr. Urinech. Anything from the board on that? All right, let's move on to project updates, Mr. Urinech.
Okay, we'll start with.
It's all yours.
Start with the easy one. I do not have any pictures of the power plant. They continue to make a lot of progress cleaning up all of the debris on the site. I have a meeting in about a week with Mr. Wayne Woodruff. He's going to take me through the site. He was hoping to get some drone photographs of the progress they've made, but weather and timing didn't cooperate for this meeting, but we will have those at the next meeting. Moving on to the water filtration plant improvements. So here, this was taken about a month ago. This is the new chemical feed building at the water filtration plant. Have, on the next slide, a current picture. It's taken from pretty much the same angle. They've gotten the concrete block installed. They're about halfway up this wall with the brick. They are continuing their progress on that. Quite a bit of improvement over the last month. So this is the location of the new fluoride feed building. Back here, we had added, I believe it was in about twenty-eighteen, twenty-seventeen as part of the last improvement project. We had made the decision to start adding the corrosion inhibitor, orthophosphates. This is going to be the concrete pad for the new structure, the chemical feed, or the fluoride feed, going to be almost identical to that building, slightly taller, but same general footprint. This is just to the north of the existing filters at the water filtration plant. Moving on to the new filters, you can see here we have the existing filter building. Four new filters are being added on this way. They've completed the lower level. This is the area that will actually house the filter media, and they're preparing to start progressing upward from there. This is a view from looking northwest. Pretty much if you were standing near the entrance on Lake Road, you can see they've got it formed up to finish the southern wall of those filters. They completed the north side. They're moving on to the south filters. And then the next view will be looking down into those. So here we have the completed north filters, process piping, carrying the settled water, the backwash water, the effluence, and drain piping.
Can you go back to that, Mr. Urinech?
Sure.
And just kind of describe, if you would, what's the flow scheme here?
So here you'll have one individual filter. Up here you have a second individual filter. This is the pipe gallery. On the other side, you'll have a mirror image of that. You'll have two additional filters. All of the underdrains and filter media will be placed in here, and then you have the various piping that will deliver the settled water, which has been through the coagulation, sedimentation, come through here, filter through. You'll have the underdrains that will collect all of the filtered water and then carry it for additional treatment. That's when we add an additional dose of disinfectant, the chlorine, soon to be the sodium hypochlorite, and then backwash water. That's where we pump the water up from the bottom of the filters, remove any debris that is accumulated, and then you'll have a collection for that as well, the drain that will carry that waste to be recycled through the head of the plant.
Okay, so forgive the elementary nature of the question, but what appears to be rooms here are actually like tanks that are ten or fifteen feet deep?
They'll be open at the top. You'll have a walkway that will be constructed. Once they get to that level, then you'll be able to see each of the filters are open inside of the building. That allows kind of monitoring of any conditions when you're doing a backwash, just various things that the operators can notice, you know, what color is, you know, the backwash water? Is it more from solids that are being removed from the lake? If it's a blacker color, then that could be a sign that carbon is carrying over through the sedimentation basins. It also kind of gives an indication if you were to have any sort of, I guess, process problem. If there was, we had had, a couple of years ago, we had an issue with some of the filters where the undertile, underdrain had actually been worn away. Those are things that the operator can pick up on as they're going through a process like that, and so that's one of the reasons we've always stuck to having a manual wash as opposed to just hitting a button and walking away. There's lots of information that you can pick up just from viewing those filter washes.
And again, the filter media is at the bottom, is that correct?
Correct.
And then it goes through holes in that?
It's all gravity through the process. The settled water will come in on top, filter through the filter media, and then there's a collection system, just basically tiles with small holes in them that collects all of the water that has been filtered.
And the wear and tear that you referred to, and I remember we had to replace with some difficulty the filters, the wear and tear is due to grit and so forth?
So that was due to some of the process piping had actually broken underneath the surface of the water. There's an arm that will pump water, spray water across the top of the filter media. Because we added coagulant, that can get kind of attached to the upper layer of the filter media. By spraying it, it breaks that off, removes it. That bearing had broken, and so it had basically a jet stream coming down from the surface wash, and it was just spraying directly into one spot on the filter. And so that's, I guess, one of the things that can be noticed.
And what's the, just so again, people that are watching and the newer members of the board can picture all this in their minds, the throughput of the plant, as expected, is some millions of gallons per day?
This will, completion of these four filters will bring us back up to the fifty million gallon per day rating. Each of these filters is responsible for five million gallons per day.
Okay, and the total is what?
Fifty.
Fifty, yeah, okay.
So our rated capacity at the facility was fifty million gallons. We had to decommission the original twelve filters, so we're currently at forty-two.
Forty-two.
Forty-two. So this will give us, once we high-rate these four new filters, it'll put us back to the fifty. So it's a net zero on this project. We're not gaining any capacity, but we are gaining efficiency.
Right, and you have newer versus older?
Correct.
Facilities. Okay, thank you for the, oh, sorry.
That's right. And each one of these is, can be run independently and taken out of service or repaired without affecting the other three?
Correct. In the prior filter addition, they had constructed them where they were paired, where these two filters would share inputs, drains, and so when you would take one out of service, you would lose, instead of five million gallons of your treatment capacity, you would lose ten million gallons at a time. We had found through operating it that way that that wasn't the most efficient way, especially if you get into a case where you have a defect in one of the filters, you're losing a much more significant portion of your capacity. So we felt that it was, you know, slightly more expensive, ultimately more efficient to construct them individually.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Ricky?
Yeah, just, where do we stand on schedule? I mean, we've had a great summer as far as lack of rain and stuff. How are we versus plan on this project right now?
Still pretty close. We still haven't been able to kind of finalize if there are going to be any delays, as we had talked about when we were doing the initial part of the construction, still dealing with all of the unknowns underground. There were some situations that had created a couple of small delays. We don't know for sure if that's going to be enough to really affect the project. Substantial completion is still next summer.
Okay.
So all in all, it's proceeding very well.
Change orders are within budget right now?
We've been very good on change orders so far.
Actually, the majority of the change orders have been credits.
Credits, that's what we like to hear.
That's more better.
That's more better, more better. That's what we like it. No, that's fine. And then my last question is, do we need any major outages to make final tie-ins?
No major ones. We have a couple outages that are upcoming, but those are not going to be complete plant shutdowns.
Okay. We only had one of those.
Correct. Through various expansions, we have valves in certain locations that we can isolate our newest filters from the two thousand and two expansion. So when we go through these upcoming outages, we'll still have eight filters that are going to be processing water. So while it's still disruptive, it does give us a greater window because we can manage everything by still maintaining those first eight filters in operation while they do any future tie-in.
And just for everybody's information, what are we pumping with the lack of rain and me watering my lawn way more than I probably should? What do we, what do we? What keep watering my lawn? What's our output been based on forty-two million, forty-three million gallon capacity?
Upper twenty million gallon, low thirties.
Okay. But we're not having any trouble keeping up?
Nope.
We hit some instantaneous daily maxes in the, you know, mid-thirties.
When my sprinkler system kicks on.
That's right.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've hit forty million a couple of times.
Yeah.
Have we really?
Yeah.
Not for a daily total. No, but instantaneous. Six AM when everybody's sprinkler system on my street kicks on.
And you're in the shower.
There you go. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Urinech. You may proceed.
Moving on to the Techwin project. So Techwin has three representatives from their staff onsite this week. Yesterday and today, they were focused more on kind of doing their checklist. They wanted to make sure as far as supplying power to all the pumps, make sure that everything was hooked up correctly, checking rotation, kind of doing all of that. It's prerequisite tomorrow that we'll begin working with our staff on operation of the system, and by the end of this week, there should be products starting to be produced. This is just kind of a couple of pictures. The MCC, the Motor Control Center of the container. You can see they were doing some troubleshooting there, just verifying everything. There's a touchscreen panel onsite that will allow control and inputs. Initially, it's going to be, controls will be done onsite. If this were to be a long-term success, then it would start to get integrated into our SCADA, but for now, it's just kind of a touchscreen display, very similar to the control panels we have throughout our existing plant. Just pictures from outside of the container. Our staff had been working at running conduit from the container over to, there was the existing building located on that property that we have repurposed. You can see they lined it with insulation, and they've, this was when they were in the process of getting the holding tanks installed for produce chemical. You can see around here, they have the spill containment, heat, obviously.
Mr. Urinech, you mentioned that you expect to be producing product some sure period of time from now. What process do we have to go through to have the product that we make be approved for use, and then what process do we have to go through, or what part of the other projects have to be completed in order to incorporate this product?
So that is something I have been working on for the last couple of months. NSF sixty, National Sanitation Foundation, you need to go through a testing and approval process of the chemical that requires an onsite audit. They go through, view all of the equipment, your SOPs, and then move into testing of the product to make sure that it matches up with expectations. So we are in the process of moving through that.
Is that a third-party examination?
Correct. All the chemicals in the United States have to be certified by NSF in order to be added to drinking water. So that is the process that we're working through. We've received our testing schedule. They will be shipping bottles to us, and then we are, when we feel confident that we're getting a consistent product, that's when we would start having those analyses performed. And then it's about a sixty to ninety-day process, so it should move relatively quickly as long as there are no unexpected hang-ups with the operation of the equipment.
If it so happens, and there undoubtedly will be instances of this where the product is rejected, what's the disposal method?
I mean, it could be as simple as pretty much feeding it into the wastewater plant.
Okay, there is, there is a, you're not just.
No, it just cannot be used in the process of treating the drinking water. Drinking water, okay. Good question.
I got you. Mr. Ricky, good.
As far as this, okay, you answered the question as far as what we're going to do with the product that doesn't meet specs, because I'm sure there's going to be quite a bit of that. We hope not, but I'm sure there's going to be some learning curves. Who are we using for our people to, who are we training from our staff on this? The wastewater people, or distribution people, or water people?
Mostly water people. Water filtration plant manager, Jason Gibney, who's going to be heavily involved, senior operator.
Okay, I just wondered who we know we're located. Correct. I wasn't sure who you were having actually run it. We're not hiring anybody at this point to man this facility.
No, it's small.
I haven't seen any hits for that, okay? Very good, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Urinech. Anything else from you?
No, sir.
All right. Let's go on to the CUE report, Mr. Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a number of items to update the board on. First item, just as an information item, as Mr. Ricky had just brought it up earlier about part-time. Stella Davison, who has worked for us in the spring semester as part of her internship and co-op in her environmental engineering program with the University of Toledo. She did work part-time for us throughout the summer. She, we have worked out with her, she is going to do another semester of co-op and internship for the fall semester. She's done a great job for us and just want to thank her for that. She does have to do three co-ops throughout her bachelor program. Two of them can be at the same location, so. Again, we are glad she's here, but just wanted to, for the record, she will be here for the fall semester of two thousand twenty-five in the engineering group, and it's an hourly rate of nineteen dollars per hour.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Monroe.
Next item, last week, Cleveland did host the One Water State Conference, that is wastewater and water professionals. The conference was well-attended. There was, I believe, over twenty-three hundred attendees to the conference. It was downtown Cleveland at the convention center. We had several staff members attend. Mr. Urinech and Mr. Gibney presented, and their topic that they presented on was our master planning that we did with StanTech. They co-presented with Isabel Hammer, who is a professional engineer with StanTech. That was our project manager. I will say that the room was pretty packed, and it was well-attended. They did a nice job, and they represented the organization well. We'll also say that Mr. Lou McMahon also presented. We unfortunately did not get a chance to attend his, but I'm sure it was.
It was packed.
It was, I'm sure it was just as.
Well-received.
Well-attended.
Standing ovation.
Yes, but so again, it's important that, you know, we, again, staff, many of us attend that conference for multiple reasons. We can obtain continuing education credits, all various technical sessions, and the networking with our peers and colleagues in the industry. The next item is related to the two thousand twenty-five Water Bundle Project. We had our kickoff meeting today, pre-construction kickoff meeting with all parties. We had Avon Lake Police Department, Fire Department, Public Works, the city's consulting engineer, Mr. Howard. We had Avon Lake City Schools bus coordinator was here, as long as the contractors and the subcontractors talking about the schedule, various items. We're looking at, they're going to start mobilizing on, and you'll start seeing them work September second, so right after Labor Day. Initially, the project, when it was bid, it called for a little over two years, about two and a half years of work. Their initial schedule that they presented to us, preliminary schedule, has them finishing up by the, about the end of next summer, so not, not, not near the two and a half years. But as we know, that can, that can change. So we will start our communication outreach as we have done in past projects of this nature with our residents, you know, website, social media. We will do door-to-door, you know, communications with affected residents. They will be working, the first area will be the Delwood, Inwood, and Bel Air area for water line work. So we're looking forward to that, that project kicking off. Talking about projects, I just want to let the public know that there are signs posted on Walker Road. We have fielded many calls about eastbound traffic will be closed for approximately sixty days, beginning August twenty-fifth. That is not an Avon Lake regional water project. That is the Walker Road Phase Five paving project for the city of Avon Lake. It's being managed and overseen by the Public Works Department. They will be doing full road restoration, as well as some stormwater work in that area. Westbound traffic will be maintained throughout that, but I just want to make sure that everyone knows that that is not part of our Water Bundle Project.
However, it may affect attending the meeting. You may have to approach or depart by a different route.
Yes, and the last item I have to report on, it's, everyone is well-aware, but any members of the public that aren't, is we were fortunate that we were able to partner with our colleagues at Lorraine County, Rural Lorraine County Water Authority, on an application to the state of Ohio, the All Ohio Future Fund. We were awarded a sixty-seven million dollar grant for water and sewer infrastructure for economic development in Lorraine County. So we'll be meeting with our partners this week, tomorrow actually, to discuss our next steps and start, start that process. to discuss our next steps and start, start that process. So we look forward to that. And that is all I have to report.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Anyone from the board with anything to update the board on or notices of any sort? I will add then that I did attend a meeting with Mr. Monroe and the outside architect, Sixmo, before I went on break. And we are very close, I think, to at least a final plan for the expansion of this building, which will, you know, kind of bring everybody of management level back into the same building as it once was. And the other thing is I was remiss in my, you know, lengthy opening, you know, gambit here tonight, but Ms. Perkins is with Lorraine County, not with.
My promotion.
No, it took her promotion and her pay raise.
But she worked with Mr. Armbruster, so I apologize for that. I didn't make sufficient notes. Thank you for your involvement. I think this is going to be a very big thing for us all. And that's all I have. So we are now at the point of, well, first of all, public speaker is Mr. Urinich. Anybody?
No, sir.
Anyone in the audience? Okay, we'll close the public speaking session.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, I, I just want to point out that our viewership tonight is, is significantly increased. And I, I do have some college-age kids that are at home that promised they were going to tune in before they headed back to college. So, you know, we're, we have 15 viewers tonight, which is a significant, significant increase, so thank you.
So thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. We have a motion before us now for an executive session. I did not state, Mr. Rush, that the executive session vote will be by roll call, whereas all other votes, as you have heard, are by voice vote. So having said that, Mr. Rush, would you like to make a motion for the executive?
Yes, I will. Prior to that, we will say that the CUE does not anticipate any formal action from the board upon reconvening from the public, to the public meeting. I move to, I move to meet in executive session allowed by our Highway Rules Code Section 121.22 G2 to discuss the purchase, sale and/or lease of property for public purposes and include the CUE, the CUO, Business and Financial Coordinator, and representatives from Lorraine County, Lorco, Raptellus, McManus, Tagulis and Manzer Gavin.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Ricky. Roll call vote, Mr. Mondello?
Yes.
Mr. Rush?
Yes.
Mrs. Schnabel?
Yes.
Mr. Ricky?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. The room will now be closed, except for those that are in the, invited to the executive session. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance. We will be back on September the, what's?
Second.
Second. And for the next meeting, and again, keep in mind the planned roadwork on Walker Road if you're planning to attend. Thank you all, and good night.